Good morning. We would like to welcome everyone to this morning's study session from Mesa City Council. We'd like to excuse Councilmember Summers, who's not with us today. And I don't think he'll be joining us by phone either. So, the first item on the agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss, and update on the photo safety program. I like the title of that, by the way. That's "The Photo Safety Program." No comment.
Yeah, you know. If you like everything else, life will be good. Mayor, Councilman?
Pombia.
My name is John Pombia, Deputy City Manager. I have with me today our Police Chief Frank Milstead. I have Lieutenant Andy Nesbit, who we believe is one of the longest-running individuals who has knowledge about photo safety. So, we tell him no matter what his assignment is, he will be with this project from beginning to end. And I also have Lieutenant Mike Bellows with me, who is currently overseeing the project. We start by always focusing on the fact that the purpose of the Mesa Photo Safety Program is public safety. First and foremost, everything we do at these intersections is to promote the safety of our citizens. The program history, what I'm going to highlight here for you is this contract expires on February 27, 2014. That's why we're bringing it back to you, so that we address this issue prior to that contract expiring. The last time I was before you on this issue, we discussed a two-year extension to get to the useful life of this equipment. At that point in time, you asked me to bring it back before you, and you also asked me to highlight the areas of photo safety we're doing apart from the cameras. We will do both in this presentation. One thing has changed. At that time, I was telling you that once the useful life of this equipment was complete, that we would have to go back out to RFP to get new equipment. I do not believe that is the case anymore. ATS tells me that as these intersections, our intersection cameras and school zone cameras, if they go down, they will replace the guts of those cameras free of charge. So, we are no longer in that situation where, if we move forward with this program, we will have to go out to another RFP. I just wanted to say that upfront, because those are a couple of the concepts we've discussed before. The configuration has five school zones, 24 intersection cameras, and two mobile van units. At most, we've had five mobile van units, four that we used in service, and one that was a reserve. Currently, we only use two of those mobile van units. The program benefits, first and foremost, it provides around-the-clock accountability. If we put a motor officer out on the street to monitor an intersection, what I am told is, at best, we get six or seven hours of actual monitoring. They need to take breaks, they need to have a lunch, and they need to write paperwork. These cameras do not need to do any of those things, and they can work 24/7. We have found that 87% of the citizens who receive a citation do not get a second one. 56% of the violations come from out-of-city registered owners. We also believe that there's a reduction of total crashes and serious injury crashes at all intersections citywide.
Vice Mayor?
So, let me ask you. Program benefits, reduction of total crashes and serious injury crashes at all intersections citywide, you believe that. How did you come up with that? What's the rationale or the quantitative analysis? How do you make that statement?
What we do is compare the number of crashes we had in previous years to the number of crashes we currently have. And when we say "all intersections citywide," we have numbers for our monitored intersections with photo safety, and we have numbers for our unmonitored intersections. The number of unmonitored intersections greatly exceeds the number of monitored intersections.
Define "greatly exceed."
There's 430 monitored intersections, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, total intersections.
When you say "the number of accidents greatly exceed,"
No, no, no. The number of monitored intersections is 24. The number of unmonitored intersections is about 420.
Not the accidents, the number. Okay, gotcha. Sorry.
We've taken quite about, especially in the last couple of weeks, a lot of look at these numbers. And what we've found is, at the unmonitored intersections, we've seen an overall crash reduction of about 30 to 35 percent. Now, that number varies from year to year. It's been as high as a 1% increase, from what we can tell, and as low, as much as a 40% decrease. We've done the same thing with the monitored intersections, and we've seen anywhere from a 29% decrease to a 70% decrease.
Have you seen any increases in the monitored?
We have seen no, from year to year, we have seen no increases in the monitored intersections.
Well, that wouldn't be true, because we've done those same statistical analyses. Now, I thought we weren't going to hash and get down in the weeds over statistics, but if we're throwing out statistics, one of the ones that's been done by Ian through, and we're looking at it through traffic engineering, that's what's reported, you know, if we want to play the game of stats, and everybody knows what happens with stats, we've had a 20% increase in fatalities in monitored intersections, over a 14% reduction in fatalities in all other intersections. That's a valid number. You can look at it. They've done it. But see, we weren't going to get into, you know, bickering back and forth.
Well, wait a second. I've never heard this, so Councilmember Luna has it. We need some numbers. And the one thing, Vice Mayor, if we're going to have stats, how are your stats any better than the other stats? I mean, numbers are numbers.
Well, my stats, well, why don't we have the city engineer come up and give us the stats that he gave the PD and gave the national, in the State Transportation Board? And they will be that same number that you just said. The numbers he gave was a 33% decrease in overall crashes in monitored intersections, and in all other intersections, 34% decrease. And they took a sampling of intersections that did not have photo radar, and it was a 34% drop. So, we had a higher drop in accident, or overall crashes, in non-monitored intersections. And that was his stat. But the point I'm making is, not bickering over stats, is how do you jump from these statistics to the conclusion that because there's 22 intersections, and it's not 24, it's 22 intersections, have an impact on a city this size throughout? That's what you're saying, you believe? And how do you discount all the other efforts that we've been doing with regard to DUI vans? Millions of dollars of intersection improvements for safety in some of our most dangerous intersections. I don't know if some of these folks remember, when we first came on, there was the Operation Safe Streets, where Chief Gascon, for a year, did intense, during the same period, intense traffic enforcement. So, by just throwing this out, and that's why I'm taking exception on this one bullet point, you cannot, in my mind, reasonably make a jump that because there was photo radar enforcement in 22 intersections, it's had the overall effect on the entire city, because you leave out big portions of this.
Can I devil that out? Can you make the opposite assumption, that it hasn't?
Yes, I can.
And based on what?
Based on all the other efforts that we've done.
Well, I guess what I'm going to do, Vice Mayor, is I don't think that we have enough data and haven't done the study to prove one way or another.
So, let me ask you that, Mayor, if we can have that. Why haven't we done a cost-benefit analysis of this overall program? Why are we scrambling just days before this to try to come up with some stats that we can bicker over? This was a $17 million program over seven years. We should have had this done and crystal clear long before we start bickering over numbers.
Well, I'm trying to figure, I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just trying to figure out, if we signed a contract and we agreed to pay a certain amount of money, at that point in time, that was a sunk cost.
But a cost.
But a cost, okay. So, I guess the question is, if we don't have to pay to renew the equipment, what is our ongoing capital cost to continue the program?
We won't have ongoing capital cost to continue the photo safety end of this program.
Okay, so I guess what I'm getting at is, I'm not understanding how cost is the factor here. I get that there are other factors, and I have some issues, okay? Just so you know. But I'm not understanding how cost becomes an issue. Yeah, go ahead.
Because the rental of the equipment is one small cost in this overall. We spend $30,000 a month or more just on process serving. And if you want me to break it all out, I know you have a thing that comes up and shows it. But there are tremendous costs in personnel and issues all the way out. So, cost is a big factor, is how we proceed. Just because they dropped the camera lease doesn't mean that we aren't going to have some significant costs in this.
Are those costs covered, or are those costs not covered? I guess is the question. I mean, do we issue enough citations through photo radar that our operating costs are covered?
Currently, our operating costs are covered. I would like to-
Well, the people that go through that are the ones that are going to have to pay those charges and go through that. But there's a cost to the city and the citizens of Mesa and whoever else comes through. We should at least, as you look at the cost and look at the benefits, now, you know, as we talked before this, I thought we all came to the agreement, there really, if you bicker over 2% here or 1% here, you can't make the argument that there's a big difference statistically between covered intersections and not-covered intersections.
I think you can make the argument, the question is whether, we'll buy it, is another thing.
Well, I'm sorry. I don't think you can, you know, thank you. So, if you're trying to trip me up, you did, but I'm telling you that-
Oh, I'm not trying to trip you up.
I think there's not a reasonable way to, you can extrapolate and say, because photo radar in 22 intersections was present, that it had an effect on a city of this size with 400 other intersections. We actually, you know, have a lot, we have 430 controlled intersections, we have over 1,000 other inner intersections. So, you know, I'm just trying to say, there's a lot to this, and making that one-line conclusion that photo radar reduced all accidents and all crashes everywhere is a leap, and you discount all the other things that we do when you do that.
Okay. Councilmember Luna?
Mr. Pombia, do you have comparable data of another community that's similar to Mesa, our size, that does have the system in place? So that we can make an analysis and make that comparison?
Councilmember Luna, thank you. A study was produced by Traffic Engineering in September of this year that just did a quick comparison between some communities that have photo safety and our community. And it showed our community with a 34% reduction, as we had talked about, approximately, and other communities around Tempe, Phoenix, who both have photo radar, with either a 19% reduction through, by Phoenix, and a 15% reduction with Tempe.
I'm sorry, does Tempe still have, Tempe doesn't have photo radar?
Tempe, and this was previous. Tempe has not, they currently-
Now, does Tempe, just so I understand, because I'm not that familiar, but I thought I understood that Tempe didn't have intersection photo radar, they just had street. Is that, am I understanding that correctly, incorrectly?
Sir, I don't know the answer.
They had intersection too? Okay, all right.
But currently, that contract is suspended. They're currently not doing photo safety. But Mesa had the most significant reduction with a 34%, and the surrounding valley agencies had varying statistics. I can go through them if you would like me to.
And Vice Mayor, I believe that the point you made is why we called it program benefits and why later, and I'll skip to Slide 10, why we talk about, why we think we've seen these crash reduction statistics. It's no one factor. Not only do we have photo enforcement, we have many very capable officers who are patrolling out there. We have an engineering department that, when we redo our intersections, they work very hard to provide safer intersections. They get better sightlines, wider lanes. Our transportation department has done what I think is a great thing in double reds. We have intersections where there's a red both ways for, I believe, three seconds now. Two seconds? Those things altogether have created what we believe are the trash reductions. In no way, shape, or form were we attempting to tell you that 22 intersection cameras alone, along with the school zones, was creating this reduction. We believe it's the entire program that what we do.
I misunderstood in that bullet point, because it seemed to infer that you were inferring that, I mean, I'm reading it still, it seems to say that, but I get it now.
Okay. Councilmember Luna?
Taking consideration of the photo radar, what would it cost to have a policeman in each corner to monitor traffic?
24/7?
Yes. I mean, as we look at, we have a system in place that does it. I mean, I think that's a valid question.
I think our average officer, I'm just going to go off the top of my head. Let's say the average officer costs the city between $100,000 and $120,000 with benefits and everything rolled in. We would need three officers at each one of those intersections every day. So, it would be quite, and that's, and it's, normally, they work a 40-hour week, so it would take probably five to six FTEs to cover each intersection.
So, what we're saying is, not going back to the initiation, I don't know how long photo radar's been around, but the general idea behind it was to replace, or be able to replace as best we could in physical or human coverage, because human coverage either was unattainable or was too expensive. That was the intent. Now, whether we've achieved that or not, I guess you could debate based on numbers and whatever, but is that sort of the intent, again, back to what Councilmember Luna said?
Yeah.
About 10, 15, 20 years ago, whenever it came in?
I think one of the most important aspects to the program that we talk about is accountability, and it provided a much wider expansive of accountability.
I mean, do you believe, I'm guessing, and this is sort of like a softball question to you, but I'm guessing you still believe that that's the major benefit of it. You don't have to put humans at intersections, and you get that coverage?
Mr. Mayor, there's a couple of different aspects to it. First off is, we do work under a decreased staffing model in these economic times. The second part of it is the synergistic effect of people not knowing exactly what intersection's monitored, what is and isn't. They're more cautious, and they're more careful about driving, their driving behavior in the city.
So, you believe that the presence of these at intersections causes people, as they approach any intersection, to think twice? That's what the police-
Yes, sir. And because everybody, I mean, this is not a popular program. We understand that. But the reason it's not populated is you can't barter, you can't bicker with the system. It's accurate, and there's nobody to let you off that day. You're going to get a citation from the machine.
Yeah, I think the bickering comes after the machine does it. And I think, actually, what we come down to is that that's probably, without even hearing, my guess is that that's the area that there's the most consternation, is after the picture's taken, because then you throw all sorts of things in it. You throw into, well, who is really the driver, the mix, match of the driver to the vehicle, how that is processed, the service, and, you know, we have to admit, there's some chinks in the armor as far as service, you know. We all hear horror stories, had it happen, where you have a less-than-stellar process server who cuts corners, or is flat-out, you know, dishonest in it. And you've heard those. Now, whether those are widespread or localized, you know, I don't know that there's any real studies, but we've all got the emails, we've all heard the stories about after the photo is taken. And maybe that's where the big challenge is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Okay. So, that's interesting. Going back to your saying, PD is saying, this is the best way to proceed with the program, but you know that you're bucking the trend, because in the state of Arizona, the trend is moving away from this. And if you look at Pima County, who's just about to do this, they've done a study, they've looked at the numbers, they're discontinuing their program. That's a county of 900,000 people plus. They don't think it's advantageous. Tempe did away with it. I talked to those Tempe officials and asked them why, and a couple of them, at least, the elected folks, and they said the numbers didn't support it. So, this would be contrary to what the trend is here in Arizona. So, just to counterbalance some of these points you're making.
And in those jurisdictions, I'm not sure how they looked at the program, but we've always looked at it from a safety perspective. We've always looked at it as only one aspect of our program. We have always looked at it from the standpoint of, how do we better engineer those intersections? How do we better time our lights? How do we use transportation, engineering, police, all together, to instill within our people a safety?
Go ahead.
I would disagree with you.
Mike.
Sorry. I would disagree with that last statement, because I think part of the problem that I've seen, and I've spent more time on this subject than anything I've ever done in council, not because I have an ideology against it or anything, but I've found we've actually left out key players in this process, and one of them's traffic engineering. As you look at the possibilities and some of the information, having everybody at the table on this, I don't think we've done. So, I wouldn't say that we've, I can tell you this, when I've asked, why are we doing this particular process in the court building, others that are part of this process goes, I didn't even know we had someone there. So, to say everybody's at the table and we're working together with this, I don't think would be a true statement.
I'll proceed on with the presentation, Councilman Mayor. The next thing is, one of the things we've seen, one huge benefit is the school zone cameras. Most of you have seen this slide before. We see a large reduction in speeds in school zones, both when they're on and when they're not. So, that's a huge benefit we see to the program. The next slide is to highlight the fact that we have been very cognizant of council's wishes and the importance of safety here. Over the years, we've heard consistently that we do not want our vans to be out there trolling for speed violations. We do not want to use them in so-called fishing holes to catch people. You can see, over the last four years, we have greatly reduced the reliance that we have on speed vans. To, I'm not good at percentages, so I can't tell you off the top of my head what percent reduction that is, but it's a big reduction in how we use our speed vans. Our speed vans currently are used predominantly for neighborhood interdiction, school zones, construction zones, places where we believe there's a-
Neighborhood interdiction sounds like a great bureaucratic term. Why don't you say what that is in English?
In English, what that means is, when a neighbor calls, perhaps they live on a cut-through street. So, they live between two major roads, and people cut through to avoid traffic, and they see people flying through their neighborhoods. When they call us and say, hey, we've got a problem here, we can send the vans out there to control that and hopefully give the neighbors some relief. So, we've limited the use of the vans predominantly to that purpose.
Okay. What, let me ask you this. Speaking of that, I know another way to do that is to put that little mobile radar unit with the flashing speed sign. How many of those do we have, and how often do we deploy those as part of that program?
Currently, we have two that are at the different divisions. One's out at Williams Gateway, and then there's one that floats around to the other divisions. In traffic, we have a brand-new one that we just got this year from Governor's Office of Highway Safety. The older models have no way, no feedback mechanism on it, so no way to capture data. The new one that we have is equipped with an ability to capture data. So, we can actually look and see how many cars have come by, how fast they're going, whether there's a speed problem or not, and we can report that back or make a decision on how to deploy. We currently have one of those. We ultimately, in this cycle, are going to ask the Governor's Office for additional units, because that is going to help us be better at this neighborhood interdiction-type of a traffic approach.
Okay.
One of the other things we took a look at was citizen complaints. Now, this is a snapshot. There are three things that can lead to citizen complaints.
No pun intended, it was a snapshot?
Unintended, pun intended.
Now, how many snapshots did you get of this?
Apparently, about 30,000. The, there are three areas that we generally see complaints. We see complaints in process, service process, we see complaints about the actual citation, and we see complaints about the court process. These are the complaints over the time period that came to the police department. And for every 1,400, about 1,500 citations issued by an officer, we get one complaint. For every about 27,500 citations issued by one of these cameras, we get a complaint. So, we know it's not probably all the data, but from the data that comes into PD, this showed the relative number of complaints we see between the two.
Vice Mayor?
Appreciate how you presented that. We had a chance to talk about it. In the contract, it calls for, and I think we've seen, everybody agrees, this is an area we can improve in with regard to complaints. There was a very specific process with documentation and follow-up that, at least as of 18 months ago, we were not doing, and we hadn't been doing for years. So, it's pretty hard to really pull out some of it when we haven't had the process. But what I was encouraged to hear is that everybody's committed, and we're going to figure out a way to kind of document and follow through. So, thank you.
This is a financial history overview. Obviously, in this situation, you can see upfront, when we had the lease payments, this program operated in a net loss. It was in 2010, 11, the first time it didn't operate at a net loss, and you can see the numbers as they sit. Photo safety's tough when it comes to numbers. If you're spending too much money, people wonder why you're spending the money. If you're making money, they wonder why you have a program that makes money. That's why we have consistently stated and stayed with the course that this is about safety tests. The numbers are what they are, and in a presentation like this, we need to provide the numbers. But this is about the photo safety and how we work as a team, as a city. I've gone through this a little bit. We believe it's a three-pronged approach: public education, traffic engineering, and enforcement of traffic laws. We believe that's the only way that we can produce effective solutions for our citizens. Vice Mayor Fenter, if in the past you believe we have not included traffic engineering in that, I can guarantee you, from this point forward, they will be. I have believed that they have been included, in the meetings at least that I've been in. But we understand that what they do with those lights, what they do with those intersections, is as important as anything else that we do in promoting safety for our citizens. They are a very important team player, and we see them as such.
Yeah. Vice Mayor? To clarify, what I was saying is, when we've been doing the analysis and having everybody get, I know they're a valuable part of it. Every day, that's all they do is to make sure this, you know, city is safe traffic-wise. What I was concerned about is, we were putting together the numbers and the analysis and trying to get something in a very rapid manner, that I did not see them there to be able to offer input in some of the stuff. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
That leaves us with five options: continue with the current configuration, operate intersection and school zones only, operate school zones only, eliminate the speed vans operating the rest, or eliminate the program entirely. The recommendations we have is that we believe it's an integral part of our public safety team. We believe that with all the other factors that we've discussed, it's something that we would like to see maintained. We are working very closely, Lieutenant Bellows is working on really defining and having very strict policies and procedures about how we go. One of the complaints we've heard is, as we have turnover within the, who manages this for PD, different things can happen, different rules can occur. We're going through a process, making sure our policies and procedures are tight, that they are dead-on, that we will not have change as we move from manager to manager of this program.
My question on that is, how can that happen when you're dealing with a legal process? I mean, how have we allowed, I think it's a valid criticism, that from one manager to the next, you have different rules and different policies. It's a legal process. How does that happen? I mean, and why would there not be very well-defined protocol and that? I mean, if I go to court, doesn't matter who the county attorney is, there's rules of procedure that I have to follow. It would seem like, since this is an enforcement action, that the second that photo is snapped, there should be a very well-defined protocol as to what happens until you get that to court. And if there's not, then I have a problem with it. You want? Sure.
I think what Mr. Pombia was first talking about is the, when we talk about change in management, as people promote and move out, it's what happened with the previous council, what were the agreements that were made? And one just came up just several weeks ago. We had a, it was a holiday week, and one of the vans was out in the school zone during a week that school was off for fall break or whatever it was. Well, the agreement was that we wouldn't do that. Mike's new in the program, and he wasn't aware of that agreement, so the van operator went out, even though it was a known complaint, but they shouldn't have been there on an off-school day. So, it's not after the picture's taken that we're worried about, when you talk about legal things. It's really just about the procedural, where to put the vans, when to put the vans. When I first arrived here, almost four years ago, one of the big issues was the vans were in transition zones. And I think we've completely eliminated vans in transition zones. Everybody knows that, the van drivers know that. We've actually had very stern conversations with the provider over those issues. So, it's not after the picture's taken that things change. It's really when the vans are put out and before the picture's taken. We actually changed our process server. The new process server, I believe the number is, do you have the complaint numbers, Mike, since we've used the new service for the people?
How many we've-
Yes, is it three?
It is very, very low. We've-
We've had like three complaints with the new process server over the last 18 months. So, those things, we continue to adapt and change to try to make this more palatable, because again, it's an uncomfortable thing. Nobody likes getting a photo ticket.
And the final part of our program recommendation is to enter into a five-year service agreement with ATS. We actually own the post and the box, they own the guts. If we go down this path, we believe it provides the best amount of safety and the best relationship. One thing I can tell you about ATS is, in any meeting I've been into, when we've gone and talked to them about, hey, we need to modify this way, we need to modify that way, they've been a willing partner in making this match what council would like and our safety goals. They have never come to say, no, we got a contract, we're not willing to do that. They've always been willing to look at how we do our contract and make it meet the needs of council and the citizens. And that would be our, and now we're looking for direction on that recommendation, those recommendations.
Okay. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor. I was around back in the Stone Ages, when we had our first contract for photo safety[1722.95] for photo safety back in the late 1990s. And the program has, has evolved over the years. And again, I go back and look to see, is the current program serving the purpose that we've identified to enhance public safety and calming traffic and improving driver behavior? And, and my analysis, the various components of photo safety absolutely do that. They do that in conjunction with a variety of other things that we've done, particularly what I would characterize as almost spectacular intersection improvements that are, are based on, on solid research in, in terms of trying to prevent accidents at, at intersections. I, I think the presence of a, an intersection program in a community like Mesa, it's well-known that, that, that we have it. Certainly within our city, the majority of people getting tickets are non-Mesa residents. I think the presence of the intersection cameras plays a role in reduction at monitoring intersections throughout the city. I'm not saying it's the decisive role, it's a combination of, of factors. But I do think it, it plays a role in minimizing the, certainly the head-on collisions. Some communities have reported an increase in rear collisions, but the head-on collisions is where you have the most opportunity for serious injury, fatalities, property damage. I think it's, it's serving that purpose. The, in looking to discontinue a program, I have to try to figure out, well, why would I want to do it? I wouldn't want to do it here, I mean, it's not losing money. The hope is that at least it breaks even. I, I think it is one of the tools that is helping improve traffic behavior. I thought one of the statistics that was very interesting was that 87% of people who get a citation don't get a second one. And I can swear to that, since I'm a, I'm a number one, you know, knock on wood. The driver safety class was, was very helpful. I'd say, yes. So, so it's, again, it's, I, I look at it, I think the program is working. Where I've had complaints throughout the years have been primarily focused on two things. One is the vans, and, and the other is process. And if you look at the complaints that have come in, they're probably coming in from me, as Mr. Pomby knows, about where vans are placed, or, in fact, I think I was the one that called the, went in on the van being in the school zone on a holiday. So, but in terms of citizen complaints, I look back over the last five and a half years of being on council, and I think the only complaints I received about the program early on were about the process-serving issues. And I think changes were made both in our process and at the state level that have significantly reduced that part of it, that element of it. Certainly, I know the residents in, in my district have seen the value of the, the school zone cameras in, in a very personal way. And I've not had any requests from residents in my district to remove the intersection cameras, to remove the, the school zone cameras. Nobody likes the vans. If the vans are kept, I think they do need to be used as we were told they would be, in terms of either school zone enforcement or requests from neighborhoods. And I think the department needs to do frankly a better job in, in making sure neighborhoods know that it's a tool that's available for them. And the department needs to be able to keep a record of those requests to be able to tell us how many neighbors have requested that as a, as a tool. Because I still don't know that. I asked that question at our last public safety meeting, and no one's ever gotten back to me on that. So my conclusion is that maybe no one's asked. But, but that's the sort of thing, if you continue it, you have to, you have to make that tool available, make it known, and then keep a record. So we can, again, evaluate that in looking at all the other issues in terms of continuing the program. But at least from, certainly from my perspective, I, I think we should continue the program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Richens?
I, I always said that, that the financial history of the program isn't as big a deal to me. I didn't care if it made money or not. If it was about safety, profits weren't a big deal. So I'm going to ask you a question that's probably unusual for me, because the finances of it haven't been a big concern. But I don't see a financial projection going forward. What do the numbers look like going forward? The cost to the payments to the vendor? There's nothing in the presentation that said, "How much is the program going to cost us from a cash flow standpoint versus the anticipated revenues?"
That comes from the tickets themselves, right?
Correct.
Mayor, Councilmember Richens, I believe moving forward, what you will see is our payments to the vendors come from actual citations once they're paid. So from a city perspective, we don't make individual payments to the vendor. We are the pass-through for the payment of that ticket. They get a percentage of that ticket, and it goes to them, just like the state gets.
John, that line is called equipment, capital equipment lease payments. That looks like that's been tapering off as we've made those payments. Is it suggested, as we go forward, will there be any more payments for that under this next five-year agreement?
It's my understanding there won't be.
So I think that's the, that's the, as I look at this, that was the largest difference in what drove the net positive, net negative for the program. So without that capital recovery cost, then the, I think you could take that last two years, Councilor Richens, and then extend that out for the next five years. Because you're not going to have that, as I understand, the capital equipment lease payments line item will not be included in the expenses.
So the fixed costs are, the fixed costs are eliminated, the variable costs, you're always going to have a ticket that's in excess of the variable cost of the payment to the, the payment to the, the vendor, the payment for the, our personnel, the process that is directly related to the volume of tickets, and therefore, we're going to be in the positive going forward.
Let's, let's break that down then to the individual level. So a red light ticket is how much, what's the fine on a red light ticket? My wife would know, but I don't know. She's not up yet, so she's not watching.
Isn't it like $2.75? I think that's set by state, isn't it?
Mayor, it's $220.
$220, wow. And Phoenix is $2.75. A friend of mine, a friend of mine told me that.
Break down that $2.20. Show me, show me what goes to whom. You have these, these breakdown lines.
I'm going to need to get with the court. The court is not here right now. I'll have to get with the court. A certain percentage goes to the state, a certain percentage goes to the vendor, and a certain percentage goes to us. That is broken down by formula, and it, it's consistent per ticket.
I, I figured it was, there was a pretty well-defined formula for it. I don't have it. And so that, I think, helps us, as we do this cost-benefit analysis, I think people are talking about, helps us understand, you know, how much of this is a racket for a vendor, and how much of this is really working out well for us from the program. So, I mean, I agree with a lot of Councilmember Fenter's points. I've had some real reservations about this program. But I, I've seen the program shift since my term here to the focus on safety and, and seeing the overall reduction with the reengineering of many of our dangerous intersections. I think our capital improvement program should always be tied to intersection safety. So whatever the top 10 worst intersections are, let's get those into our capital improvement program, or get them on this program to start that process to making them safe intersections again, and eventually engineer the need for photo safety right out of the city, because we've engineered all of our intersections safely. You know, so for me, that's been the overall focus. So that'd be helpful to get that.
And we will have that provided to council as soon as we can get the exact breakdown from court.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Are you anticipating increasing the programs at, at the rest of our high schools? Because it looks like it's only at Mesa Hyde and Red and Skyline. Are you looking at, is this part of the process in the agreement?
It'd be just another option. If we were directed from the council to expand the program, we could do that with the vendor.
Yeah, I think when we talked about this, golly, three, four years ago, the idea was that as, as the 202 especially shifted traffic from the surface streets onto the freeway, that some of the intersection red lights were becoming less and less, especially like on McCalips was the examples we used. And therefore, and I think that's where we got most of the school zones, we shifted those intersections where they were not an issue or where there was less and less utilization to school zones. I think what high schools were not, Bishop Ridge wasn't included in that, and-
Red Mountain's not-
Red Mountain's not included in that. And maybe there's-
Westwood.
Westwood. Westwood's not included. And maybe that's not a need. I mean, maybe Rio Salado, AKA Eighth Street, doesn't have an issue. I don't know. Maybe it just really doesn't need that.
There's an issue.
Okay.
I mean, the problem, the dynamic is there is you have Rio Salado Parkway, and then you have a cut-through street on 10th Street that we actually funded in our bond program to solve that program. So we just have to be careful how we do that, because as we redo and try to reduce traffic on the neighborhood street-
You're going to push traffic.
We're going to push more traffic on Rio Salado, which is the intent. So we need to make sure-
They're going to want to make up time by going faster.
Right. So we're going to have, but, but if, then you put a bunch of cameras there, then they still want to go down 10th Street.
Well, I would, I would assume there, on Rio Salado, is that Cherry? What is that street that runs along the west, the east side of Westwood?
Well, West, yeah, Cherry.
Cherry.
Cherry, yeah.
You know, seeing over the years how that, that crosswalk, I mean, the paint gets brighter and whiter and everything, I'm assuming they're doing that because that's a perceived safety threat. Because it seems, you know, when you're there, man, it's like neon lines, neon lights. So it would seem like that's a natural place to, to put that, because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic.
Right, yeah. And so, yeah, so the photo, this photo safety program, I mean, maybe it helps us to find the more holistic problem on Westwood Street and Cherry and 10th and Rio Salado Parkway in, in, in an element of solving that program. Because Westwood's got some really bad circulation problems, because you have an elementary school, a junior high, and a high school there. And we've been trying to get for years some, some kind of look at that. And traffic's been out there actually, big thanks to them, out there at the end of last school year to do some analysis. So we're starting to gather some really good data, historical data, to see how we can solve that problem. And so it'll be interesting to see if this aspect, this program, could help solve that, should we decide to continue it.
I, I don't have a problem with the concept of photo radar, if done correctly. And I think we've discussed ad nauseam areas where it wasn't done correctly. I, I do have issues with making sure that we have a very well-defined protocol after the photo is taken. I, I think there have been issues. I'm glad to hear that the new process server is, seems to be doing a good job. I'd like to make sure that we, that our policies are in place to make sure that no matter who's there, it's very much a tight-run ship, and there is not a whole lot of discretion. I think that, I think that vans are, I, I don't know what benefit we get from. I would prefer on the neighborhood, what do we call that, neighborhood intervention?
Interdiction.
Interdiction, excuse me. I'd like to see that profit that we, that, that excess revenue, don't call it profit, that makes sense. I would love to see that excess revenue go into more of those fixed things that are more warning, and that, that can help neighborhood. And then if you can, you know, I, I see that 1.4 million that we made this year. I don't know how many of those units cost. It seems like in a city of 140 square miles, you could have more than one of those kind of units.
Matter of fact, Alan and I had a conversation this week about putting up more of those warning.
Yeah. Because to me, to me, that, that serves a great, great-
Well, there's both the portable ones, and then there's the ones that we've put outside the downtown.
Well, I like, I like the idea, well, I like the idea of the one that actually not only gives the warning, but also monitors. So it gives us real data. So we know that if that's not working, we can stick a, a motocop out there, and we can, we can do some really on-the-ground enforcement to, to change behavior. Then if that doesn't work, we can put one of the, the permanent ones. I think those work. I, I think those have an influence of, of lowering speed, because I think they're a nice reminder. And they also appear, and whether they're real or not, there's obviously a, a radar unit in that sign, and people, you know, they respect radar, and they slow down, even though it's not an enforcement item. I'd like to see more of those, those specialized units that we could put out, and we could, we could then use that data to help traffic engineering, to see if we need some, some traffic calming devices. Because to me, that's the ultimate thing. If you have a school zone or something else, you do what you do on 10th. You re-engineer the street to force, to force the, the traffic down. You, you know, you put things out, yeah, you do stuff that forces traffic to slow down. It's not, it's not the heavy hand. You change the engineering of the street, whether it be speed bumps or something like that. So I, I would, I would prefer that we, we don't have any speed, speed, or speed vans at all, because I, I don't see any positive. One thing I would like to say is, when we talk about operating school zones, if we're, if, if our idea is to have the enforcement in school zones, then those cameras should only be working during school hours. And I know that in some cases, they are working 24/7, and if that's not the intent, then we shouldn't operate the cameras that way. And I, and I actually had, one of the complaints I had is someone showed me their ticket down by, what's it, Franklin, the old Brim Hall, Franklin. And it was at 9:30 at night, and they were going, they were going 47 miles an hour. Well, according to the sign, it's 35 during school times and 45 at other times. Apparently, there was a malfunction, or else we're giving photo radar for two miles over the speed limit. I just, well, it shouldn't happen, I agree with you. But I saw the ticket, and I saw the timestamp on it. And it was, it was 9:30 at night, it was 47 miles an hour. Well, in a 35 mile an hour school zone, that's, that hits it. In a 45 mile an hour zone, which is what it should have been after school hours, you know, my idea is, if it's a, if we're there for school zone safety, it should only operate during school times. And I, I think if we're sophisticated enough to, to have a radar, it seems like it should have a timer. And if not, I can go down to Home Depot or even Albertson's and buy one of those dial-a-timers to, to put it on. I think we're sophisticated enough to do that. If that's our purpose, that's what I would like to see. And, you know, I, I have no problem with the intersection, other than if it's truly for safety, let's be blatant about it. Photo radar, photo enforcement. I know we have the signs every once in a while, be more aggressive on that. Because I think it does, I think it does affect behavior. Unlike Councilmember Kavanaugh, I, I've gotten one photo, one red light here in Mesa, and I was, I was trying to go meet with a constituent. So I want you to know that was well-intended. It was an attorney, and I asked-
Did you go to the community?
I should. Well, no, I was going, I was going to meet with a zoning attorney. Oh, yeah, that's like double whammy. Yeah, and because I was late, he got paid by his client, and I paid a 200, well, I spent a day in traffic court. But I will tell you that since that time, I approach intersections much more cautiously. I am certainly much less aggressive than I used to be. Now, I don't know if you can take this, this population and expand it, but now we have two, we have two anecdotal stories, and I have to believe that it does affect behavior of drivers. I think that makes drivers much less aggressive as they approach intersections, which is great. So I, I'm in general support of, of the program, if done right. And those are the things. Tighten up the policies and procedures to make sure that, both on the front end, on the back end, we know exactly what we're doing. It's written, and it doesn't matter who's there, that there's a very well-thought-out. Make sure that the, the complaint system is in place, that we can identify when there are breakdowns in that system, and we handle it, handle it correctly. I would support an elimination of the vans and a replacement with non-human behavioral, whatever you want to call it, those, those units that, that, that collect data in addition to warning. And, you know, if we're going to make money off photo radar, I would propose that we reinvest that into public, into traffic safety items, if that's our stated purpose. I don't like the idea of that money being available to go into the general budget. It needs to stay where the stated program is, or however, wherever it goes. I think there are ways we can spend it that further promote traffic safety, traffic calming, and those kind of things, which basically eliminate the need for vans and other things, that cover up that cost. And I have no problem doing that. And I'm thinking that's it. Okay. Councilmember Luna?
Which begs the question, what if you get a ticket, and you've gotten simply what the mayor has alluded to, the, the driver was going 47 miles an hour, it was, you know, the 35, 45, what happens?
We fix those. If, if it's brought to our attention, Councilmember Luna, we just, we'll take care of those, or they can go to the court to take care of them. But if it's brought to our attention through an inquiry from a citizen, we have them, we look at it, and if they're correct, we just have the citation dismissed.
Yeah, the idea being that someone, I mean, I know we can say, "Go to court." If there's, if there's a mix-up, I don't ever want to see, have, have to see someone have to go to court because of a mess-up in the photo radar system. I think that's the ultimate goal.
And I completely agree. We shouldn't put people out. If it's our mistake, it's our mistake, and we should take care of having to dismiss.
And part of our procedures, I think, should be very, very well-defined, that if that does come in there, and we can tell by looking at it, I would hate to hear that someone says, "Well, go explain that to the judge." Because, you know, that's, nobody, we should never put a citizen in that position. They have to go to court to cover up for a, a misfire in the system. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, Mayor, we agree completely.
Is there, is there any legal issue to that, once that citation is issued, though? I mean, doesn't it have to go through the court system?
We can actually make the motion to the court to have it dismissed. As, as the issuing agency, that's not a problem for us.
And once again, that's because there's a flaw in the system, not because we're arguing whether they did or didn't speak.
Right, I know. But I'm just wondering if the citation triggered some kind of legal mechanism that, once that's in motion-
I think we can move it dismissed.
-you have to play it out, but no?
For example, the example I put up where it was obviously 47 and a 45, that's not one we would prosecute normally.
Correct.
There was a, whatever the system malfunctioned, we would just move to dismiss that, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Luna?
And I also want to disclose, I got a traffic ticket. You know, and one of the things about traffic school, which I will never forget, is we saw a lot of videos, and we saw drivers driving through for the photo radar, and people get distracted. And I don't think I will ever forget that. It just, it's something that sunk into me, and something that I will never forget. I also work on university, and university near Stapley is-
What's the name of the street over?
La Zona.
La Zona. And I stop there all the time, and I, I've seen so many traffic, red traffic violators just, just drive down there. And, and I, and the first thing that came to my mind, I go, "Oh, that's too bad, there's no photo radar here." Simply, I understand that you can't put photo radar on every, every corner or intersection. But that's the first thing I thought of. So I'm really not opposed to the photo radar, and I simply support the, the notion of having them in schools. I'm not sure if I, the van is of any, of any use, significant use.
use, significant use. So that's where I stand at this point.
I will tell you one little anecdote. No, this was not me. It was, it's a constituent who came to complain about getting a red light. I looked at the picture. They said, "This is ridiculous." I got this red light photo and here's the picture. The guy is actually literally looking at his cellphone while he's going through the, I said, "Have you looked at this picture carefully?" He goes, "No, what?" I go, "What is that in your right hand?" Never mind. He was literally looking at his cellphone just like that while driving through the red light. Vice Mayor?
Okay. Well, so we're all, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Taking this opportunity, just so you know where I'm coming from, and I, I think fellow councilmembers know, anybody that might be watching, I do not have some ideology against, you know, this photo radar. It isn't about big government trying to come. I have had lots of concerns, you know, I really jumped both feet into it about 18 months ago when I started getting delusional. It's interesting, when you start hearing everybody else's complaints and similar complaints about the school zone late at night and you're getting chewed out over the phone because now they have to worry about it all weekend, there's some consistent patterns, at least I've pulled away from people's personal experience. I've never had a photo radar ticket, hope to never have one. Family members haven't, immediate family members, that is. And so I just want you to know, this isn't about running for office or some ideology. But I'm gonna make a, here's what I would love to see happen, and I don't know if there's gonna be the support to do it. Keep the photo radar in the school zones. And if appropriate, expand those to the, we heard about Westwood, Mountain View ought to be looked at. One of the worst accidents I ever saw was a young person hit by a car crossing there by Mountain View. So I truly believe that if you have established photo radar zones, people will slow down. I do, everybody does. It won't be profitable for anybody because those tickets, there won't be a lot of them after a period of time because everybody's gonna drive slow. But that's the goal, right? I would say discontinue the photo radar vans. I've expressed my frustration to the chairman of the Public Safety Committee and anybody else. I've watched those abused in so many different ways. So that will be out. Now, here's, here's the sketchy one, and I'm hoping I get support for this. Suspend for one year the photo radar in the intersections. And don't think that I haven't sat up in the middle of the night thinking, "Am I jeopardizing anybody's life by doing this?" I, I've thought it through. The statistics, as I look at it, between signalized or photo radar intersections and the others are pretty tight. We're not gonna bicker over a percent here or there. And there's an argument to be made of whether that would expand or the benefit of that would expand throughout the city. But if we keep it in the school zones, if your premise is correct, then it will still have the effect throughout the city. But what do we get to do in that year, one-year suspension time? It allows a period to compare and contrast. Forgive me, I have to kinda look at these notes. I'm getting old. The benefits of the program. Specifically, we could take Mesa Drive in Southern that has had millions of dollars of intersection improvements and be able to compare for one year the safe, the drop in accidents and crashes and injuries versus seven years of having photo radar in that intersection. And I think you can make an argument throughout some of the other 22 locations that we have. Gives us time to do a true cost-benefit analysis. When we're sitting here and watching silence for a little while, it kinda tells me that maybe there's an opportunity to do a lot more work along those lines and Councilmember Rich has mentioned it. Here's a big one. It allows time for the new council members that'll be going through an election during this one year to weigh in, understand, and then vote and feel the effects of their vote. If we, if we were to put off for one year, so in February 15, just the intersection portion, then they'll be able to get on board, vote, be educated. And then, I think it's kinda crazy for us, especially if there's gonna be changes on the council, to make a five-year decision that binds maybe multiple terms for future council members. This gives them the opportunity. It also allows a little bit of investigation for some new technology. And believe it or not, in our conversations, we've had great back and forth behind the scenes, there's a new collision avoidance technology that's coming out. I don't know if our current vendor has it. I've heard the other one does. Where literally the intersection photo system will recognize and realize that there's a car about to run the, the light and they'll hold red in all four directions so the car can, as it blows through it, it doesn't have an impact. It actually probably saves lives, but there'll be some time that needs to be evaluated and looked at. And does it have to be with photo radar or could it be with our traffic engineering folks if that technology is there? But it gives us time to kind of examine it and look at that. That hasn't been on anybody's, forgive the pun, radar up to this point. And that's a major new technology. Also, and I'm just, I'll just be real quick here. It allows us to put together a working group. And if you notice, where's the courts? The City Prosecutor's Office, Traffic Engineering PD, PIO Office. Believe it or not, part of our contract that we signed that has really not occurred much is there was supposed to be a pretty active public service announcements. I've kinda heard from both sides and everybody's pointing fingers of why that's not happening, but it's not happening. So you get a working group for this year, pull them together and really look at doing a system that, that everybody agrees with. There's statistical analysis, even audit, have audit come in and, and audit what we've done and where we're going and what the plan is. And then quickly, it allows, which I think is a major positive, to, for PD to come in and put in a new manager in that area, allows that person time to get on board, develop SOPs, work with the working group and be able to come up a pretty good plan. So I try to be as reasonable as I can, recognize that there are benefits in some photo radar in the school zones, leave the opportunity for expansion. And it, it also, by the way, when I mention that working group, ATS should be a part of that working group. And you, you haven't heard me say one negative word about them. I think they do exact, they do well exactly what we allow them to do or what the parameters. And sometimes there's been a drift, I'll just tell you. And so I'll say nothing negative about ATS, but we need to get them to the table, technology and other things, and look at those opportunities. So that would be my, my compromise or proposal.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Glover?
You know, I concur with Vice Mayor Finter. When I first joined council, what I find really interesting is that it was known as photo radar. And as the year has gone, the years have gone by, the narrative has changed. And so it's become more about public safety. But I think that's just because you're trying to put lipstick on a pig. Chief, you said it best, no one likes getting a ticket. I personally don't like photo radar. And I think that it takes the human element out of it. And when, I think that when this program was first instituted, it was about generating revenue. And that's what the state sold us on. That's what the city was sold on. Over the years, I'm glad that it has shifted like Councilmember Rich said, more towards safety. So I can be very supportive of it in school zones because I see this public safety benefit for that. But I do concur with Vice Mayor Finter. And I think his recommendations are both valid and it's a good compromise.
Okay. Any other, any other comments? I appreciate some of the comments and I share some of the concerns, but I don't, I don't see a need to completely redo the system. I see, I see tweaks that need to happen. I think what you've seen here is, if I'm doing my counting right, a vast majority, almost unanimity disdain for the vans. So I, I don't know that, that that is in the program if we're gonna look at some things going forward. As far as, and I think you see almost unanimity as, as far as the school zones, maintaining those or even expanding those. It would seem like what we're looking at now is intersections and whether we should take this break, the proposal that the Vice Mayor has, has put forward, or whether we can continue on. And maybe I would offer maybe a little bit of a tweak to that tweak is that we formally set a one-year, a one-year review, have set down what we expect. And I think you've heard some very, some issues we have and have come back in one year and give a formal proposal answering those specific things. You know, I think that if, if going forward, we are not going to have the capital requirement, my guess, though, is that ATS would like a five-year commitment in order for them to invest rather than we invest. But what that means is that at any time, we can certainly buy out the contract. And so what I'd like to see is something, I, I agree that we should not, we should not commit to a five-year program where in one year we may find that you're either unable or it's just impossible to fix some of the deficiencies in it, or we find it's not working like it should. But I think we need to be aware that if we're going to go forward with the understanding that we're not gonna have to make additional capital contributions to the equipment, that, that means we would also need to pay something to get out of it if we decide to quit it before five years. That's an obligation I think we'd be taking on. Am I wrong on that? Like, I can't believe that ATS would invest thinking that they couldn't get a full term out of, out of that. I might be wrong.
That was their desire for the length of the contract.
Okay, all right. So there'd have to be an out. There'd have to be some sort of negotiating. But I'd like, rather than suspend a program for a year, the reality is if you suspend it for a year, it makes it a much, you know, it's just not gonna come back. And I, I think that what you see is, is three things going on here. A desire to tweak the program, a desire to eliminate, and correct me if I'm wrong, eliminate the vans, a desire to maintain or even expand school zone. The question then becomes, what do we do with the intersections? Am I recasting that correctly?
Yeah, can we put it to a vote?
Yeah, we will. I just wanna make sure we're on. So the idea is that the mayor has presented a proposal, has presented a proposal that we, that we suspend the program for a year and then come back in a year and revisit whether we wanna do it. You know, I would suggest we set down some very specific processes to work on and then in a year come back and revisit. So the question is whether we suspend the intersection program for a year or whether we leave it in place but have a very well-defined review program that we review formally in a year. Is that an accurate description where we are? Okay. So we already have two proposals on, on the table, okay?
And we're not, we're assuming everybody's agreeing with the no van, whatever, whichever direction we go.
Yeah.
No vans, expand, possibly expanding the school zones.
I'm, I think that's what I heard, that people talking-
Trying to find the common.
Yeah, I didn't hear anyone against eliminating vans.
The other thing that I heard was kind of committing the, any revenue generated-
Oh, yeah.
Excess revenue generated by the program to go into-
Reinvesting the traffic safety.
Traffic calming and traffic safety.
Inadiction programs?
Yeah. I mean, they had a mobile trailer, I think, that we talked about.
We'll come up with a better acronym or name.
Yeah, so the concept is, is that if we do, and I'm glad, you know, if we're gonna be in the financial situation, it's, I'm glad we have excess as opposed to negative. But if we have that, that that money is reinvested into traffic safety items.
Yeah.
Whether it be traffic calming or machines.
It can be, it can be-
Yeah, it could.
Stuff like, like you were saying, the chicanes and the speed humps and, and-
And/or the, and/or the equipment.
Driver feedback signs, all, all that stuff should be on the table with that.
But if this is traffic safety, we would reinvest that money into traffic safety.
Okay.
Is that, is that what I'm saying? So that would be part of my, my proposal. So let's, Vice Mayor, you have a, I'll take that as a motion to suspend the program for a year.
Just that portion.
And come back. We have a second from Councilmember Glover. Now, I will, just so you know, I will offer a motion. After that goes, if that succeeds, then that succeeds. If it fails, I'll offer a motion to, to continue the program in just the intersections, to reinvest monies into traffic safety and also to have a formal review in a year and have us set down some, and to look at these, this, these items of protocol procedures you're going to do. So we'll have, if the first motion succeeds, we'll stop there. If not, then we'll go on with, and I'll, I'll introduce a second motion. Does that sound all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table from the Vice Mayor. Does everyone understand what that is? Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. Vote is four to, and the motion fails. Okay? Motion I would, I would offer up is that we continue the program in the intersections alone, but however we, maybe, I don't know, timeframe for you to come back with some very specific things, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, what, if you wanna-
I don't wanna just get back in a year and have the, the same conversation.
Okay.
I wanna have some, some standards of measurement.
Okay.
And have, and come back and say, "Okay, you're gonna report on this in a year." And that's, that's the purpose of that meeting, is to say, "Okay, we get it that there was some concerns. Here's what we've done last year. Here's what we've done in traffic safety, traffic calming. Here's what we're doing in neighborhood interdiction. And here's the data." And, and, you know, I think one of the interesting things, although I think it's a leap, is to look at an intersection like Mesa Drive in Southern. I wanna be careful on that because once again, you're widening an intersection in addition to removing photo radar. And so I, I think it's, it's a, a cause and effect is a little bit nebulous there.
Well, and as of right now, we won't have a full year. We've effectively calmed it down pretty bit well right now with the construction.
That's the other thing. Traffic barricades.
Yes.
So our street, those, yes, those are, those are traffic safety and more than one. Hey, Brady, leave the humor to the- Okay. All right. We have a second motion by Councilmember Kavanaugh. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
Motion, the motion, vote is four to two with council members, or with Vice Mayor and Councilmember Glover voting nay, the motion carries. Okay? Thank you. We look for some improvement and continuation of the good parts. Okay? Second item is appointments to boards and committees. We have a motion from Councilmember Kavanaugh, a second from Councilmember Luna. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Information pertaining to job order. Any questions on the job order? Okay? Here are reports on meetings and conferences attended. Councilmember Glover?
Mayor, this last Tuesday, we had a very successful BSN in the Temple Historic District. We had over 100 people attend and we were very excited. So I wanna thank Lindsey Belanke and all the city departments who came out in support of that.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you. Mr. Brady?
Only announcement I have today is that remember, I will have our next council meeting will be December 2nd. Oh, and lunar landing. We talked about lunar landing. We'll be-
We'll be at the Red Mountain-
Red Mountain Think Spot.
The Think Spot.
And it'll be this, is it this Friday?
This Saturday.
This Saturday, starting at?
10:30? 10? 10 o'clock?
So 10 o'clock this Saturday, Red Mountain Library.
Is that lunar or luna?
Luna.
Lunar landing.
It's a lunar landing.
And if you're from Boston, it's a lunar landing.
Is that the, at the Think Spot? So invite everybody out to that.
Well, great. Good. That's exciting.
I'm gonna arrive in this baseball-
Okay. All right. Thank you. Good. All right. Motion entered in executive session. Motion from Councilmember Glover, second from Councilmember Luna. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are moving into executive session. Thank you very much.